Start our meeting now.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, November 6, 2019 at 9:00 a.m. Mr. Winarski, Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
This morning, we asked that we remember those in our community locally and globally that are less fortunate than we are. I remember all those who lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. And also, we ask that we just remember the emotional health of our community. We have tragedies and we have both sides to a story that tells the whole story. And so, we just ask that we remember those that lost their lives in any way, shape or form. Also, finally, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebatable, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes from the council meeting of October 16, 2019, and bills for payment on November 1, 2019. Ms. Allen, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Winarski.
I'd like to welcome our mayor here this morning, present us with the proposed city budget. Welcome, Mayor. Lieutenant Walter.
Thank you. Happy to be here. Thanks a lot for having us. As and you can have a call. I could email you a copy of this speech if you want afterwards, or give you a hard copy, whatever you prefer. But as you know, our consultant, PFM, has detailed that the city of Erie has three very serious budget problems. The three issues that face us are first, our pension problem, second, our debt problem, and third, the structural deficit. What that means is the growth of our recurring expenditures has greatly exceeded every year for a long time, the growth of our annual revenue. This three-headed dragon, as PFM calls it, is the result of decades of making short-term decisions and pushing the three large budget issues off into the future. This delay in addressing the city's budget issues has compounded our future deficit every year. Today, we present a 2020 budget, and I will explain how we are taking on and correcting each of these issues first. So first, let's talk about the pension problem, which is our most pressing problem. The amount the city will be contributing to employee pensions has doubled in six years, from about 9.9 million in 2014 up to 18.8 million. We cannot permit this to continue. The reason the city's contribution to pensions are rising so fast is that two of our pension assumptions are very outdated. First, we have been using the mortality table from 1983, which is over 30 years old. Second, we've been assuming a rate of return of 8% on the pension when the actual average annual rate of return is closer to 7%. Based on PFM's recommendations and extensive analysis we've done, including advice we've gotten from Don Betker, we are making the following changes to pension assumptions. First, we'll begin using the most recent mortality table, which is from 2014. And second, we'll reduce the rate of return assumption to 7.25%. In the short term, this will cost us more money, but over the next 20 years, it will save the city over $11 million. The second major issue is our debt problem. The way our debt is structured now, the payment will increase $1 million in 2021 and an additional $3.5 million in 2022. Our debt payment will rise from $3.7 million in 2020 to $8.1 million in 2022. The way to eliminate this problem is to pay down the debt, but how are we going to do that? The Water Authority has offered to prepay their annual lease payments, which goes through the year 2050. That could generate $60 to $90 million. These funds could be used to pay down the debt and significantly reduce our annual debt payments going forward. PFM has recommended that we get an appraisal of the Water Authority to determine its value before we do anything. We hope that we will have this within about a month. We will then need to make a decision based on that value and how much paying down our debt would reduce our annual debt payments. This may even lead to changes in the 2020 budget, possibly. We'll talk more about that later. Finally, the structural deficit is our third problem. That's where our expenses are increasing much faster than our revenues are. The changes we are making to the pension assumptions and the prepayment of debt will go a long way to reducing this structural deficit. If done successfully, the dramatic increase in the city pension costs and debt payment will be eliminated. The only rising cost we would have left to address is employee expenses. We've already made progress on slowing the increase of employee expenses. In our negotiation with Erie Fighter Fighters Union this year, they have agreed to the following salary increase schedule for the next four years. They will receive a 0% salary increase in 2020, 1% in 2021, 1.5% in 2022, and 2% in 2023. We're going to follow the same salary increase schedule for non-union employees over the next four years. We are hoping to negotiate a very similar schedule of salary increases with police, AFSCME, and Teamsters in negotiations over the next three years. Those are the major changes we're proposing to fix the city's budget and make it manageable without major tax increases in the years ahead, thanks to PFM and their guidance and direction on the budget. Next, I'd like to explain five other significant changes that make the 2020 general fund budget balance. First, we're going to do a tax lien sale that will generate about $1.8 million in revenue. Second, we're sending delinquent parking tickets for collection. Conservatively, this should generate about $300,000 in additional revenue in 2020, and that is in the budget you have, as well as the tax lien sale is in there. Third, income tax rates will not go up for people who live and work in the city. So if you live and work in the city, your income tax remains at 1.65%. However, people who work in the city but live outside the city will have their special levy income tax increased from 0.8% to 0.5%. So someone earning $40,000 per year who works in the city but lives outside the city, gets paid every two weeks, their pay will be about $4.92 more income tax to the city in each pay. This seems fair because they do use city streets, sidewalks, and other services, and if they have a problem or an accident, the city, Erie Police, and firefighters respond. Fourth, there is a slight property tax increase of 75 mils in the 2020 budget. This means that if you own a home worth $100,000, your 2020 city property tax will go up $75. It's been five years since the last property tax increase in the city. That 75 mil increase is only a 6% increase over the rate that was set in 2015. Fifth, there's also an increase in sewer and refuse fees that city residents will pay. It's best that we increase fees incrementally every year rather than wait several years and do huge increases. The sewer fee will increase on average from about $70 per quarter to $76.55 per quarter. Remember, council decided not to increase the refuse fee last year, so that fee is going up a little bit more. It'll be going up from $55 per quarter to $65.26 per quarter. This increase will allow us to transfer 1.1 million from sewer and 1.25 million from refuse into the general fund. And that will compensate the city for our risks and expenses in running plant operations. In the future, residents should expect minimal increases every year in these two fees. Also, when you compare our 2019 sewer and refuse fee with the 2019 fees charged by Fairview, Gerard, Harbor Creek, Wesleyville, Mill Creek Northeast, and Lawrence Park, the city's fees were the lowest of the eight. Finally, I continue to be open, honest, transparent, and accessible to you and to the Erie community. Last year, we implemented a budget procedure that is highly recommended by financial professionals. Again, this year, on the last four pages of your budget packet, you'll see a five-year budget forecast. Planning for the long-term implications of this year's budget decisions is really important to successful planning. I'm very pleased that the results presented in the five-year forecast. If you compare the five-page to last year's five-page budget forecast, you'll see significant improvement every year going forward. For instance, the 2024 budget forecast deficit is less than half this year what it was last year. It's been reduced from $22.6 million deficit to just under $10.4 million deficit. Obviously, there's still work to do, but we are making significant progress. Remember, these projected deficits assume we do nothing to increase income or control expenses over these five years. We will obviously make changes, and if we can grow Erie's population and create that abundance of family-sustaining jobs, the actual future results will be much different. The next page in that five-year projection shows what's going to happen with the sewer budget. The second line from the bottom shows the worst-case estimate of what the sewers will be each year for the next five years. The next page is the five-year projection of the refuse budget, and the second line from the bottom of that page shows the worst-case estimate for refuse fees over the next five years. Finally, the last page shows you our expected expenditures for debt service. If we are successful paying down the debt, this will be significantly changed from what you see there. In conclusion, I'd like to say three things. First, I'm very proud of this budget. I look forward to talking to you about it in the weeks to come. I'm glad we've got this to you two weeks earlier than last year, and as always, I value your input over the weeks ahead. I look forward to great conversations. Second, I highly value the work that PFM has done for us over the last several months. They are still finalizing their final report. We are trying hard to implement everything they recommend as quickly as possible. Finally, my team and I continue to build opportunity, restore hope, and transform Erie. The numbers you see today do not show the financial impact of an Erie where racism and prejudice no longer exist, and every person is valued for the unique skills and talents that everyone possesses. Every neighborhood is welcoming and vibrant. A revitalized and developed downtown and Bayfront are closely connected. Every person has the education they need to be successful, and our great family-sustaining jobs drop people into Erie region and increase our population by tens of thousands. This is a vision. It is our dream, but my team and I will not stop working till we achieve it. We'll be talking about this for many hours in the coming weeks. I certainly welcome any questions you may have today.
Mr. President, I have a couple of questions. Under the pension recommendations from PFM, there were two other things that I don't think I heard you mention. One was pursue a more affordable level of pension benefits for new hires, which I realize some of that has to do with, you know, contract negotiations, but what about those who are not union employees? The second one is revisit the 457 deferred compensation plan. PFM pointed out that the city of Erie is one of the few places where you not only get a pension, but you get a 401K-like benefit. So what is happening with those two things? My next question is, and I asked this when we met with the mayor on Monday, I asked about the golf course, and I was told that that's not a high priority, that that, that they had to prioritize what they were going to do. However, on page 28 of the PFM report, golf course, focus on fixing the deficit first. It recommends that a consultant be brought in to figure out how to make sure that the golf course is not losing money. I made this, the reason I'm bringing this up, the PFM report says that this is a small blip in the budget, but one of the things PFM stressed was that we need to lead by example. So I don't understand why you can't at least look at that for 2020. And my third question is, and when I mentioned this on Monday at the meeting, everybody looked at me like I was, you know, where was I coming from? And I went back and I reviewed my notes from the PFM consultation meetings where they specifically agreed with me that there should be a tracking system for LURDA. And I've seen nobody come forward yet from the administration to say that they are going to be tracking. Now, we have a 10-year LURDA in place, so you know, you're tracking who's getting LURDA, but who is tracking what is happening when properties are coming off LURDA that have already been on LURDA to find out whether they are appealing their assessments so that they're paying less than they, than originally they were agreed to. So this wasn't, I had suggested this, but PFM also recommended that. So I was really disappointed that I saw a lot of blank faces when I looked around the table and I talked about LURDA again, went back to my PFM notes, and there it was. They said they agree that there needs to be a tracking mechanism. So let's review. What's happening with the idea of more affordable level of pension benefits for new hires and revisiting the 457 deferred compensation plan? What's going to happen with the recommendation about the golf course, bringing in a consultant to focus on fixing that deficit? And third, how is LURDA going to be tracked? I'm talking about the existing LURDA. I'm also talking about the properties that are being bought right now at higher than their assessed value to make sure that they are at least paying what, because they have a 10-year tax break, but are they going to be paying what the actual, the existing taxes are? So that's a lot to absorb, but those are my questions that I'm going to start the budget process with. You don't have to answer them today, but I expect answers.
No, I'd be happy to give you an answer right now. The Affordable Pension and the 457 will help. We are talking about that. We're in conversation, but since, you know, the firefighters have agreed not to take a pay raise, and the 3% annual pay raise is a huge impact on the budget, and the fact that we've got one union to agree to that, and I have committed that in this year's budget, I have not put in any salary increase for non-union employees that work for the city and management employees. And I know people aren't happy about that, but I believe it's the right thing to do because I believe we have to lead by example. And since we're going to be asking the other unions to do something similar in future negotiations over the next three years, I felt important that we, that we lead by example. So I was hesitant. We are talking about both of those things, both stopping the input into the 457 that the city does for people, as well as doing things to make the pension plans more affordable, which will be part of negotiations with unions as well. But those two changes aren't going to make a huge impact, and the fact that we're asking for, you know, that 0% salary increase, I thought, I just felt it may be too much to ask. But if you want to put something like that in, you certainly can. With the golf course, PFM, you know, did not recommend that we sell the golf course, but that we evaluate it. And I think the golf course, and correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, but it's going to bring in about $100,000 this year. So it is profitable, and we've made changes to make that happen.
That's a surprise, since the previous monthlies we got also showed it. You adjusted the budget halfway through the year. So I would like to see the numbers from the original estimate of what the budget was and what the projected revenues were, and how that has changed month by month. Can you do that for me, Paul?
That should be on. That's all we provide you. The monthly report shows you.
Right, and it was changed so that it doesn't look like that there was a deficit.
What changed? What are you saying changed?
That the actual, the number was changed in terms of what the projected revenues were. Halfway through, somebody changed the numbers. So it, it, don't shake your head, Paul. I keep track of this. So I want all those numbers, month by month. I want the original projections on what it was. So, and if you actually made it money this year, you know that I've talked about this. Interesting that you didn't bring that up at any finance meetings and said, hey, guess what? We're making money. So I'd like to see all those numbers. But what about the consultant part of it?
What do you mean?
Where PFM says, "The city should seek and retain the services of a consultant specializing in golf courses who can provide an independent evaluation of the course's potential to break even in this market, whether that is through continued city management or a private operator. A subsequent phase of EIPSTMP funding could pay for this evaluation." So it's right here, page 29.
Yeah, I think we've already, you know, we're already making $100,000 this year. The projection for next year is positive as well, as you can see in the budget that you've got. So I don't feel the need for a consultant at this point.
Okay, so I just want to make it clear then that not all of the recommendations from PFM are being followed. That's all I'm saying, so.
Ms., may I speak? Sorry, I, I just want to make it clear. PFM's recommendation is to use a consultant and pay for the consultant through Phase 2. You cannot engage in Phase 2 until you complete Phase 1. You don't have the report yet from PFM. The report will come out in December. You cannot engage in Phase 2, hiring the consultant, until next year. If you do it now, you pay the bill. If you do it next year, or halfway through, it'd probably be in next year if you do it, then you can get funding from the state. 90% of that consultant's fee would be paid for by the state. So if you do it now, it's not, it's not as PFM recommended, and you're footing the bill. So I think that might be premature, but once the report becomes official, then you're eligible to apply to the state for funding to pay for the consultant.
I'm glad that you mentioned that, but that's not what, nobody mentioned that the other day when we were in this meeting. What I was told was that this was not a priority. So just to be clear, that was a meeting that was not, it was a meeting behind closed doors. So I just want that to be clear. And then my final question then about LURDA, who's going to be tracking LURDA, and how's that going to be done? Because I've been bounced around. I was, Paul Lichtenwalder said that I should ask the Treasurer's Office. The Treasurer's Office said they don't do that, so.
The county, my understanding is the county has that information. We've contacted them. They are going to get it to us, but not immediately because they have other priorities.
There's that word again, priorities. Thank you.
Mayor, and Paul, my question would be a little simpler, I believe, but that special levy that we are going to charge the people that work in the city but live outside, what's that going to generate revenue-wise? What is that number?
You'll notice in your budget book, have you had a chance to look at that?
Probably not. They just got it.
There's actually an increase in the amount that the non-local residents are going to pay. So when you're going to take a look at that, that's going to go up in your budget book this year by about $7 million. And then the converse to that is, there's going to be less of an impact on my portion of my local tax, so that's going to go down a little bit. So this year, the net effect is going to be about $5 billion, just a year south of 500, by doing that.
And I know last year was, that was one of my sticking points, that the citizens that live in the city were getting hit a little bit by raising their earned income tax, where I'm happy to hear in this budget that we can expand that to the non-residents paying some more to help our city. Thank you. Any other questions, council?
Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and Paul, administration, for all your work with this budget, and our part, working with us to, you know, have our opinion and perspective so far. The question I have is, not just last year, but several years before prior administrations, there's this lists of fees, fee increases, that are always talked about in relation to generating revenue. And I know they're much smaller than some of the things we're talking about. You know, the tax increase, the special levy tax adjustment for non-resident employees of the city, et cetera, et cetera. But some of those things, I think, could be infrastructural and long-term and grow. And I don't know that we've done, and I haven't got a chance, obviously, to digest and go through the, all the nuances. But are there any of those types of changes to, again, fees or services that we provide that historically have been free or less than surrounding municipalities? And then the second question is, in relation, well, I guess you don't have to answer this one now, but what is the likelihood of getting some of the same negotiating points with other unions? Now, I guess that's probably, can't, I can't really say that. It's probably a bad question in the public space. But I think that if we're projecting out, I guess a better question is, if we were to get what you hoped for, can you give us a number, or your administration give us a number of what that will look like as far as saving expenses for us? And not to do that now, but just in the future as we're moving forward, because I think it directly affects some of the decisions that we want to make. You know what I mean? I know you're, you're talking about five years, 10 years, ultimate change for our community or city budget-wise and debt-wise over 20 years, which I think is the right conversation to have. But some of those nuances along the way, I would be interested in hearing those in the sessions if not before. Thanks.
Smaller fees, can you stress that?
I mean, I can address that, Curtis. We're always looking at what fees we're charging people. And as you know, this year, Councilman Kowalski worked on the parking ticket fee, and we did adjust that. Some of the other fees in the past couple of years, Andy Zimmerman up in code enforcement has looked at the building permits. And, you know, we're always checking what we're charging people versus what other municipalities locally are charging, what the other third-class cities in the state are charging. And we adjust, you know, try to adjust those accordingly when needed or when we find those to be out of whack.
Was there any, excuse me if I could, was there any conversation around, I guess specifically the amusement tax, that's always for me a big buzz, increasing that and generating some revenue from that perspective as well? And then maybe other little things, but that in particular?
I can say it never came up, but that's not something we set as a priority.
I think if I just, and this is, again, not being in the administration, but some things, I understand the concept of priority. This is, I totally get that. The priority is really much related to long range and doing the right things now for the long range. I think the amusement tax, though, and some of these other smaller things, don't take as much intensity. It just has to take us, maybe make a decision to do it. We just have to decide to do that. And it's probably a couple hundred thousand dollars at least that if we could, maybe went from three to five or something like that. This is general numbers. I think that we could simultaneously, with the focus on priorities, and I'm not being facetious when I use the term, just using your language, focusing on priorities, just do some things along the way, like fee enhancements, expanding those, like the amusement, I'm sorry, excuse me, like the amusement tax, for example, that we can do simultaneously, that kind of helps. So that's just something to consider, not an over criticism, just as something to consider as we move forward, because this isn't, you know, set in stone yet.
Maybe the amusement tax brings in about a quarter of a million dollars a year, 250,000. We did make a lot of changes, obviously, that I went through in the presentation. And so that, you know, we didn't want to add one more, I guess, on top of everything else.
Well, I just think it's a different population of people that you touch. When you talk about the amusement tax, you talk about a lot of people outside of the city coming into the city to generate or to experience, and not that city residents don't, but I think it touches a lot of folks outside the city that come in for the entertainment component that is offered here with the games and the sports teams and the plays and the, you know, many of the events at the convention center, et cetera, et cetera. So just, again, we don't have to belabor it now, but just, I'm still wanting, it'd be interesting to see what that would look like as we're moving forward in negotiations.
I have one last question, I think. Is the money in here that the Regional Chamber had requested, $50,000?
Yeah, we actually, I think they've agreed to $25,000. So, and that is in there. So it's not $50,000, but $25,000.
Additional, or what, don't we already pay a membership?
We pay them $25,000. They asked us for an additional 50. We felt we couldn't do that, went back to them and said we could do 25, and they were happy with that.
And what's the rationale for us doing $25,000 for them to hire more people?
What they're going to do is bring more jobs into Erie. That's what.
Yeah, and where do I find that in the budget? Where do I find that additional $25,000 for the Erie Regional Chamber? Do you know what line item it would be under?
Go to page 57 in General Government. In the first grouping, it's the second to the last line item.
And where's the justification for this? I mean, are we having a white paper or something from them? I'm not voting for this, I just want to let you know, because of some of the advocacy efforts that the Regional Chamber has undertaken in terms of opposing the Community College. They wanted to go with the Regional Community College. I think this is a dangerous precedent for us to be supporting a, an organization that sometimes works directly against the interest of the greater number of people in the city. So unless I see something that convinces me that, you know, what they're going to do with this. So I just want to let the public know that the chamber's looking for more money.
Any other questions, council?
I'd like to say that it's a two-way street with this budget. The Council has been very proactive in the last couple of years, and I know we're going to be very proactive this year. And the fees to Council are not a little thing. So I was stressed to the administration that we're looking at all fees. Uh, as you drive around the Commonwealth, or you drive around the county, and you check what different communities have done. In the past, Erie has been accused of being anti-business. Yet I just come back from Allentown, and they have a business fee. So is many of the fees out in the east. We never instituted one. And so when we propose things like easement fees, I think those are easy things to do. And we should start looking at them, because Erie is evolving into a different kind of downtown. And it's not being anti-business or mean, uh, you know, nobody has a problem when other communities charge fees when Erie people go out there. But we're always a little hesitant. And quite frankly, the city has to stop giving things away. We have to look at the impact on the people that live and work here. As I was looking through this book, I noticed that one key figure. The assessed value of the city hasn't varied much in a long time. And the number of properties has gone down. Doesn't take a mathematician to figure out what that problem is. That means that less people are going to have to assume the budget. We're not growing. No matter what anybody says, we're growing what they would call in accounting insignificant. It, it's not enough of a, of an increase to make a difference if you compare us to Summit or Mill Creek or other communities that are, or even Allentown, who's expanding. Most of the cities in our class across the Commonwealth are stagnant. So we have to continue to work with Harrisburg to change those things. So when we look at fees, fees such as the entertainment fee and all that, that's the only thing we have to offer. You know, this is, this is a community that has all the things that make this area great, yet we don't get the benefit from it. So we have to look at fees. It's why Council looked at the parking fees. And I tell you, there's a third fee coming, and it's going to be discussed heavily during the, uh, finance meetings and the budget meetings. As Finance Chair, I took upon myself to ask the auditors to look at the way we do certain fees around here. And I'm not happy with it. And that's going to be a strong suggestion that we put something in place in how we monitor things and how we assess fees. Because, you know, just having a fee is one thing, but not doing it properly is a whole nother. I'm not going to release that today, but that's going to be given as a courtesy to the administration first. And then I will release it after, while Council gets told and administration. I plan on, uh, you know, releasing the results of what I learned from the auditors about different things. And I would suggest to the administration that we've been lax in the past. We need to put someone in the administration, uh, to approach the nonprofits, which are, even though in here they look like they've gone down a little bit, a lot of that could be people coming off the LERTAs in the past. So I'd be really curious about how much of the tax exempts are permanent tax exempt. That's a number I plan on looking at in the future, to see what that figure is. But we need to go after them and say, uh, you know, we need more than just Vincent and Hammond, stick, you know, doing the majority of the 50% LERTA. We need to start going after people a little aggressively. Not strong-armed, but we need, we need to have more pilots in place. All these things that we're doing, uh, the pension, uh, just for a fact, the Pension Board itself has recommended these for 20 years. But no administration ever wanted to touch that, and so I give you credit. This Council and this administration, uh, took the political courage, and it is political courage when you have to raise taxes to do the right thing. But, uh, that came out of, you know, the Pension Board itself realized the problems years ago, too. So we have to, going forward, we have to be, uh, cognizant that some things are going to cause pain and, uh, to do the right thing sometimes. But I agree with some of the steps we're doing, and, uh, just that, remember, it's a two-way street and everybody needs to be involved in this. The citizens need to know why we're doing the things we do. But, uh, looking forward, it's going to be, I tell you, it's going to be a very interesting budget meeting. And we're going to air a lot of things out there, but I think we have to start doing a lot of things we've been talking about, like Councilman Jones has said. We've been talking about some of these things for five, six, seven years. You know, it's time we start putting them up there, picking the low fruit, working on, you know, bigger major ones every year. But we have to start doing something. We can't keep going to the taxpayer, because the bottom line is, at the end of all this debate, the taxpayers in the city are going to have a little increase, whether it's a fee, whether it's a tax, it all comes out of the same pair of pants. There's four pockets in the average pair of pants, state, federal, city, and local. I mean, city, county, uh, state and federal. So it all comes out of the same pair of pants, in, in, you know, fairness. So let's all remember that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumber, Mayor, and Paul. Um, just a question. With the assessment of the Water Authority, that started already?
It has not. We, we sent out requests for quotes, we sent out requests for quotes on Monday, um, and we put a deadline of Friday to get those things back.
Okay.
So.
But we can't really negotiate until after we find out?
It probably wouldn't be good to do that, because we need to know a true value or an approximate value of what the assets down there are really worth, of the system itself and the authority.
We have had a couple conversations, actually, with Paul Voitek and the Water Authority about it, but, you know, not specifics. Uh, and also the interest rate environment right now, uh, interest rates have been coming down, which means we'll be able to get more money. So the amount of money we're, and the rates are expected to stay down for the, for the next month or two here at least. And so, uh, we, and we could be getting a lot more money than what we talked to them a month or so ago. But we, we need the assessment first, and then we've got that in our back pocket to move forward with.
Thank you. And do we know how much the school board tax is going up, or the school tax is going up?
I don't know offhand. I know it is going up.
And county taxes are going up, too?
I think they're both minimal also.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I believe that's all our questions for this morning. Thank you very much for your time. We got our work cut out for us now, as you guys did your job. Appreciate that. With that, we'll move on with the agenda. Thank you. Guys, get back to work now, all right? Ladies? Moving on with the agenda, appears we have a special presentation this morning, I believe, Rose. Do you know anything about it?
I know that, uh, Councilman Jones is handling the special presentation this morning.
Uh, Mr. President, thank you, thank you, Rose. Uh, I'll, I'll do my initial conversation and talk from this point, uh, from this seat. When I was, as, as many of you know, I was, I'm a part of a big family of 14, uh, children. My parents had 14 children, nine boys, five girls, I'm the oldest. And, um, I remember moving from West Fourth Street, where the Gannon Football Field is now. We rented a house there years ago, um, between, in the summer of my fifth and sixth grade year. Seems like a long, long time ago. Uh, we moved to 1826 Holland Street, right on the corner of 19th and Holland, Housing Authority House. And, um, we moved in, it was neighbors, huge garden. And behind the house, behind all the family gardens in the neighborhood, there was this raggedy old tennis court with like 12-foot-high fences. Uh, they were all rusted and leaned in and leaned out and really crazy, uh, probably unsafe. They had, uh, you know, there were no, obviously no nets in the court. Uh, but there were, the poles for the nets were still there, and weeds growing up everywhere. And so being the oldest of, of, uh, 14, and then it was eight boys in a row. And we were like rough boys, like we just wanted, we could, mama, get out the house, because y'all are going to tear my house up. We would run out into that field, in that little tennis court, and we tripped over rocks, we scraped up on gra, on glass, you know, that's normal stuff. But a couple of years later, uh, all of a sudden, we started seeing trucks over there. And, and people coming in and weeding and getting the weeds up and, and fixing up the fences. And we're kids, we don't know. And then one day, it seems like almost out of nowhere, I, I mean, again, it's a childhood memory for me, uh, so it's pretty vivid. Uh, out of nowhere, do these four blue poles sticking up, uh, in the ground. And people started coming in and putting lines on the ground. And we, sports kids, so that's a basketball, who putting a basketball court up over there? And, uh, the next thing you know, this really tall dude, and I say it like that, really tall dude came by and knew my father, you know, he calls him Mr. J. Uh, and he said, um, you know, we're doing this, and I don't know, it was a grown folks conversation. We, in my day, kids didn't get in grown folks conversation. We stayed out the way. But I knew something was changing in the neighborhood, and for the better. And, uh, long story short, because this could be a long story, uh, you know, 30 years of, of this, of service to our community in just that way. Long story short, though, he not only came and did what he had to do to enhance the community with something as simple as recreation and basketball, but he came and he talked to all the families in the neighborhood. And he said that he would give my younger siblings, I don't know why you never offered me a job, but my younger siblings to clean up after the game, make sure the court was clean. He made investment in us, not just with brick and mortar and courts and nets and basketball rims, but he said, you know, go over there and work, keep it clean, own it. And it almost became like a Spoon's Court, but it's like, the subtopic was Jones Court. It was like the title, subtitle was Jones Court, because we were there all the time, and we lived right across the yard. Fast forward, I, I go off to college, and I come back home. I, I, I get married very early, so I come back home after graduation, uh, from college, and move into an apartment on 22nd and, uh, between Parade and German. We would call it the hood. It was just home, wasn't really the hood, it was home. And, uh, we were moving in, and we didn't, and I'm a kid, I'm 22-years-old, you know? And moving in, and we thought that the electricity was going to be on by the time we moved in. Again, got married early, had two children early, so we got a one, uh, one and a half, almost two-year-old, and another one-year-old, and no electricity, in a new apartment. Nervous, trying to be strong and not tell my parents. But there was something in the back of my mind, I said, oh, I got to call Mr. Spoon, Mr. Spoon know how to. And I called him, and it's kind of apropos for the season we're in. I said, uh, Mr. Spoon, this is Curtis Junior, blah, 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 told him the whole story. He said, well, I got one question, or my first question. Are you registered to vote? And I said, yes, sir. He said, all right, I just wanted to check, because you know elections come up. And, um, all, in all seriousness, but he was serious, because he did say that. Mr. Witherspoon has been oft criticized, and maybe somewhat in the recent history, for being a social activist and a change-maker through sports and athletics and young people. Uh, but it's just one of the many ways that he's enhanced and blessed our community. Sometimes we take a long time on negative stuff, so I'm going to take a little bit of time on something positive for once. He has changed my life specifically. Part of the reason I wanted to run for Council, because I saw somebody that I trusted and related to and who invested in me was on City Council when I was a youngster, and a younger man. Not only is he an Erie guy, it's, it's interesting, coming from New Jersey, you know, um, came to Gannon, played basketball, you know, even our own mayor tells stories about Spoon. The late Ben Wiley has stories about Spoon, you know, and he would say, just catch it if I miss it, and shoot it back to me, and I'll shoot it again, is what Wiley would tell Spoon. I share that because his, his involvement and his interconnectedness into our community, the most overt thing is people see sports in Spoon's Court. I mean, not just Erie, I mean, Gannon Hall of Fame, you know, the New Jersey State Athletic Hall of Fame. Sports is a great tool, but he used it in such a way to change, in my opinion, the community for the better. There's not a young person in this community that knows basketball on any significant level that doesn't know the name Melvin Witherspoon. And not just this generation, the last three generations. And that's just the truth. And so I want to take this moment, um, along with my fellow Council members, uh, along with, I think, the heart of most people in the city that know his, that know your heart, Mr. Spoon, and to say thank you. Uh, thank you for all that you've done, all that you do. Something else I learned from you, you know, there's a bunch of where-asses and there-fours and there-let-it-be's. I'm not going to read all of those, but I wanted to, I wanted to, yeah, that too, Mr. President. But I just want to say this, that it is not only resolved in this resolution, in this tribute, but is resolved in most of our hearts, that you have been a gift to our community. And you're not going anywhere, but sometimes it's just nice, isn't it nice to smell flowers when you can? And get them when you can still smell them, you know, and to be able to be appreciated? Not that, you know, it's something about a street named after you, that's got to be cool. But to be able to see it and drive on it is a whole nother thing. So to you, on a personal level, on a professional level, on a community level, thank you. Um, you're doing more, but thank you for what you've done. Look, Kathy, you want to clap, don't you? Look at you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So I want to offer this to you from us.
Mr. Jones, I just wanted to add something. When you're talking about basketball, I talk about basketball with Mel, but we've also been talking about the power of storytelling. And sometimes I sit with Mel, and he has stories that he doesn't always tell, about how he grew up, about some of the things he experienced in Erie. And it, every time I talk to him, I learn something new, because I put myself in, maybe in his shoes, and think about what it was like to be growing up in Newark, and then to go to a junior college, and then to come to the frozen land of Erie, Pennsylvania. He just told me a story the other day about his junior college experience. And it's up to Mel to be able to share those stories, but it's amazing what I have learned about personal growth from sitting next to him and then having these conversations outside of City Council. So, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think to echo that, too, is, I had a football coach, Ron Costello. If you're an Erie person, you probably know Mr. Costello or the Costello family. And he said, he said to us, "Football is not about football or the game, it's about life. And it's a tool for understanding how to get knocked in the mouth." It's just old language, got to get knocked in the mouth and still get up and still keep moving forward. And you're a great example of that in a lot of ways. And you've done it with such cool, ice cold even. Grace and savvy, the kids call it swag. Uh, you had swag before it was a term, and you still have it, um, today. You're a great elder and a great example. And I don't mean senior citizen elder. I mean that in the communal indigenous manner of that word, an elder, an example, a leader. And you don't have to say much, but you do a lot, and that is a great example for us. So, again, uh, from all of us, from my heart, from all of our hearts, thank you, and I want to walk this over to you and give it to you personally.
Hey, ma'am. Don't sit down. You gotta come around and shake all our hands.
Thank you.
You blocked his shot.
Hi.
I think, I think I... I will read this because the person who wrote it deserves to have it read. And I didn't mean any disrespect for not reading it. All that, all that beautiful verbiage I just gave, they don't know what this is about? I'm just kidding. Whereas the City of, City Council of the City of Erie wishes to pay special tribute to one of our own, City Council Member Melvin Witherspoon as he was honored and inducted into the Newark Athletic Hall of Fame on October 17th, 2019. Whereas Melvin Witherspoon attended Central High School in Newark, New Jersey, and excelled in basketball. He left Newark and moved to Erie in 1964, 1964, and attended Gannon University, where he was also inducted into the Gannon Men's Basketball Hall of Fame in 2017. Since graduating from college, Mel has made Erie his adopted home and even has a street named after him as he was honored for running Spoon's Athletic or Spoon's Youth Basketball League for over 25 years. Whereas Melvin Witherspoon has lived and worked in Erie and served its citizens in several capacities. The most recently, and most recently, he has retired after over 14 years with the State Auditor General's office in Erie as its Regional Director of Northwest Pennsylvania. Melvin Witherspoon became an Erie City Council Member in 1996 through 2003 and decided he wasn't quite finished serving Erie as an elected official and ran again and won in 2011 and has been a little, a City Council Member since 2012. And I will do a little remix on this, and I believe, did you win another election last night? Boy, you're just an overachiever. Again, Mr. Witherspoon, thank you for all that you do, all that you've done and all that you will continue to do. And your legend, I would dare say legend, and legacy is going to be through generations beyond you being here in this room. So thank you again. Thank you, Lori.
Curtis, no committee report out of you this morning.
See, you know, thank you, Mr. President. I'll see what I can do.
Where are we at here?
Repository sales, Mr. President.
Do we have anybody here this morning for a repository sale? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Seiner. I live at 633 East 7th Street, which is 7th between Reed and Ash. And the bid I put in on the repository property is for 639 East 7th Street, which is currently an empty lot that is adjacent to another empty lot that is adjacent to my home. And in 2017, I purchased my home and I also put in a bid with the Redevelopment Authority for the lot that's right next to my house, which I purchased from the Redevelopment Authority. And I've been gardening on it, mostly flowers and some corn we grew this year and squash, which we trade with the neighbors and use for our own food consumption. And the reason why I would like to obtain the lot that is next to my house and the other lot is just that it often has trash in it, which we clean up. It sometimes becomes overgrown. And I'm invested in living on 7th Street. I'd like to expand my side yard and gardening efforts. And yeah, that's why I would like to purchase the lot.
I can attest that Stephanie is a mover and a shaker in her neighborhood. When I was walking with the mayor through the neighborhood with the police program, I stopped and talked with Stephanie. She was out gardening and she has beautiful gardens. And she was collecting sunflowers that had been damaged due to a recent storm. And she was very open and welcoming in her neighborhood. Thank you.
And Stephanie, I'm usually the one on council who asks the people who come to talk about repository sales if they have a plan and if they have resources to follow through. But like Kathy said, I know very well your work. Could you just tell the rest of council about your efforts with the school district in terms of community gardens? So just real briefly, let them know that I don't have to pose those questions because I know I've written about you, but if you could just tell people what you've done with community gardens and sustainability.
Yeah, I moved to Erie from Philadelphia because there was an Americor Vista volunteer position opening with the public schools to engage youth in outdoor activities, gardening, and environmental education. And that's what I've been doing. I'm now in my fourth year. And we have 14 gardens at Erie's public schools. We run after-school programs, summer programs, and classroom visits where teachers will bring their students out to the garden. And we grow a huge range of food and flowers and vegetables and fruits that the students get to sample and take home and that go into the schools. I love doing it. It's really a great combination of what I care about and a chance to serve the community. Yeah, and I have a snow shovel and I have a weed whacker and a push lawn mower. So that's how I plan to maintain the lot. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other repository sales this morning? Any other repositories? Hearing none, that'll bring us to citizens to be heard. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jessica Ball and I live at 747 East 22nd Street. I am here about Club Energy on 22nd and Wayne. There has been less shootings in the past few weeks, but the noise is still waking up the neighborhood every single weekend. I've asked if this has been addressed, you know, in any way possible. I mean, it's just, it's not fair to us that live there and own our homes that this is not being dealt with. There's no reason that noise ordinances are not being enforced or the loitering. I mean, we have a right to our quiet neighborhood back. There's no reason it should be in a residential neighborhood. I had a meeting with Michael Outlaw a month ago and we had, I requested me and Paul Ojeski for a meeting with the owners and he said he would set that up. And we have yet to have a meeting and it's been over a month now. So it's not that we're not trying to work with anybody, but it seems like nobody is working with us. And it is beyond frustrating because if this was happening, you know, in nicer neighborhoods or where you folks live, I'm sure it would not be tolerated to this extent. Because this has been an ongoing issue since July and we have gotten no relief from it. And I'm not sure, you know, what it's going to take, you know? If it's going to take somebody actually getting killed for it to be addressed that this is a nuisance. This is a problem. This should not be within our city limits. But I mean, it has to stop. And I would like for you guys to work on the ordinance to either ban them or curtail, like they can't be open past 2:00 a.m. They can't do this. I mean, just so they have more regulations, so it is not a nuisance. You know, if it's not something that we can get out of the city. And it's, it's costing a lot of taxpayers money with the overtime with the police because they have come and sat, you know, extra hours on weekends to help curtail the violence. And that's not fair to the taxpayers because it's affecting people that don't even live in that neighborhood or don't patronize that building. And it's, it's not fair to put it on everybody because they cannot act appropriately. So I would like to see something done to address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Roxy Ann Benson. I also live at 747 East 22nd. A few weeks ago, there was an altercation from people running out of the club in front of my house, yelling, screaming. There was probably six to eight people involved. They ran up to a house about three houses west of me. Someone had gotten into a dark-colored SUV. It was all, all females. You could actually see the person inside the SUV being punched numerous times by someone outside of their car. This went on for maybe half a minute, 45 seconds. And all of a sudden, the SUV sped off, no lights, no nothing, went right in front of our house and you would, as soon as it passed the house, you look over across the street and there's someone laying in the street. Whether they got hit by the, the car, whether they fell trying to chase the car, I don't know. But she was hurt. Her friends went and picked her up. They come across the street toward our house again, down towards the club, yelling, screaming, carrying on. Police did show up. They can't do anything because once they know the police are there or very close, they scatter. Nobody is there to talk to anybody. Nobody presses charges, nothing. And yes, I do sit out in my enclosed front porch weekends from like midnight until 4:00, 4:30 in the morning just to see what's going on, to protect my property, to try to protect maybe my neighbor's property from being damaged. There's been shootings since July. Personal property has been destroyed. Vehicles have been hit, numerous, numerous fights. It needs to be taken outside the city, not in a residential area. My daughter stated, 2 o'clock, you're done. That's the way it is for all the other, and I know they don't serve alcohol. They're not supposed to. They don't have a liquor license. I don't know what they're contributing to the tax coffers of the city. It's costing us emotional harm every weekend. It will slow down because it is getting bad weather out now. But come nice weather again, they'll be right back at it. And if it is being closed, close to being closed down, it will probably happen again that, oh, well, okay, I'm going to get closed down. I'm going to let my friend take it over. So now it's a new name, new entity, whatever, and it's going to start all over again. The neighbors, and you were given a petition with over 50 names on it a few weeks ago. Did you contact any of those people? No. Did you contact any of us? No. So, and the incident that I spoke about when the lady was laying in the street after the car took off, I called the mayor's personal cell number at like 3:00 or 3:30 in the morning.